Okay, first thing will matter tonight's Seattle Reserve located on Orchard Road, the applicant's inside land development incorporated. The requesting final site plan of subdivision Piddle associated with creation of 10 single-family lots on 5.94 acre parcel located in an R3 single-family residential district under sections 269-10, 296-27, and 350-12 of the town of Webster.
Just a little kind of update. This project in July of 21 received a sketch plan review in October 21st of 21, October 19th, I'm sorry. It received preliminary approval. So in the meantime, there's been issues trying to get sewer to it and so on and so forth. So there was some delay. Now, just for the record, this, a lot of this stuff has already been beaten down pretty well. The zoning there is R3, so this isn't allowed use in that area. There were several, several PRC comments, project review committee comments at the time, and those were applied to these plans, the current plans. Again, that area was under, came in under a cluster development. Cluster development in town of Webster allows lots to be a minimum of 75 foot wide. There isn't a lot in this project that's 75. Everywhere is, I think it's only a couple maybe, they're 80. The rest are all 100 foot wide lots. So they conform to the average lots of people in that whole area with standard lots. Instead of part of plan, it was recommended by the homeowners in the area to go to a conservation easement. And Rudy, he can designate restrictions on no tree removals and so on and so forth by the residents. That's something that can be put in. That was one of the requests they had. And one of the things we talked about also was at the rear line of these parcels where easement would be to put posts in. So we've talked to Rudy about it, posting four foot by four, or four inch by four inch posts with a sign on them, conservation easement, no removal of trees or anything with this area. So that would be part of a resolution for the approval on this project. And those are just notes I have just to bring it back up to date. So I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think you got a lot of the highlights that I got also.
Oh, why are you going over?
I'm Mike Wobegesky with the homeowners associates. Rudy Newfeld from inside land development couldn't be tonight, but we also have, I consider any former office who didn't help, was the engineer worked on the plans also. Like you mentioned, the project received preliminary approval back in October 2021. So we're here seeking final approval, subdivision approval tonight. We've been working with the town on confirming some of the sewer details. The town was looking at some sewer options, so we've been working with the town. So hence the kind of the longer timeframe between preliminary and coming back for final now. But at this point, I think we've got all that sorted out with town staff. We've met with town staff initially so that way we can get a lot of those details ironed out. And now Rudy would like to look for final subdivision approval and move forward with the subdivision. It's been a little bit, like mentioned, so I'll do a quick recap of the project just to kind of, I don't know how much everybody remembers of it. Like you mentioned, it's zoned R3. Access will be off Orchard Road, the project's on the north side of Orchard Road. The roadway will be private. And like you mentioned, there'll be an HOA for the subdivision as a whole to, for ownership of the private portions of the project and to provide maintenance of those items. Utilities are consistent with a subdivision like this. Waterman will be extended from Orchard Road. Sanitary sewer is consistent with the preliminary approved plant to go to the north to Blue Creek Drive cul-de-sac. There's an existing sanitary sewer manhole there. That's where sewer will connect to. Storm sewers will run along the roadway and then will extend to a proposed stormwater management area in the northwest corner of the project there. That's basically where the drainage flows to and then it goes to the north into existing storm sewers within the subdivision to the north. Like you mentioned, there are conservation easement areas that were reviewed during the preliminary approval on basically the east and west boundaries of the project. Those haven't changed, still consistent with the preliminary plans. One of the conditions of the preliminary approval was for additional tree plantings to enhance the buffer to the residential neighbors to the north. So that's one of the additions that was made to the final subdivision plans was additional tree plantings along that, basically that northern, northern boundary of the property of the, of the project. And then the one thing Rudy did propose was, and he's done it, I believe, on a couple of his other projects where he plants, or plants trees at the end of the roadway along with some portions of fencing, board on board wooden fencing to try to create a little landscaped area at the end of the road. So that way kind of creates a little buffer and designates the end of the road also, which would help to the residents of the north also. We did receive PRC comments before we submitted the final application. And then additionally, since submitting, we've, we received town engineer comments and town staff comments. Part of the final application included the responses to those initial PRC comments. And then we did just submit written responses to the latest round of town engineer and town staff comments. A lot of that stuff, we've met with town staff on just to review. We're confident, Rudy's confident, that a lot of that stuff can be addressed. We don't see anything in there that A, hasn't been addressed or hasn't been talked about at this point. So we're pretty confident that that stuff can be basically just finalized on any revised plans to be submitted to town staff and then reviewed from there. A lot of the technical changes if that need to happen. But that's, that's very much the recap and summary of what's happened from preliminary to final. But the plans themselves are very much consistent with the approved preliminary plans. Would that be happy to answer any questions from the board?
Okay, I guess we received, I've read it quickly, but received a letter today, last minute here, from Dan Macich, I believe it is, I might be wrong on how it is. 793 Blue Creek, can you add some comments here? If you wanted this, I think what we'll do is we'll add this into the record. These are very similar to the comments. Some, assuming some of your people are neighbors there? Neighbors there? Okay. Can you hear us back there okay? Really, I'm sorry. Can you hear now? Is that better? Oh, I'm sorry. Received a letter from this gentleman today in regard to the project and some more people from your group had submitted a letter previous with a bunch of signatures. You're all familiar with that, I guess. Well, I have to compliment you on it. You did a nice job with that, whoever did it. They were legitimate requests. I agree with many of the things on there. I think did a very fine job with that, whoever did it. Just for correcting on some of them, within the 65 foot buffer, I'm just going to read a couple of these, just to try and shorten this thing up and so we can get it all on the same page here with the border. Within the 65 foot buffer, which is 15 foot beyond the 50 foot, requires setback and constitutes the limit of disturbance. On lots six through 10, we propose that the removal of existing vegetation be specifically prohibited and included in the definition constitutive disturbance of disturbance within the area in addition to any excavation. I agree with that 100%. We can put that in a resolution. We can put that, that does not get cut, does not get disturbed. Okay? That's, that was one of the main things you had there. So you want to keep that buffer. So that's, it's a request and personally, I agree. I'm hoping the board will go also. There's a comment in there about existing trees to be saved over eight inches and so on. That is in the approval. We already did that. Since we didn't do it, yes, we did. It's in, it's right in the minutes of the preliminary approval. That was accomplished. Trees, they're mature trees, need to be preserved. Now, obviously, we all know that you can't preserve a tree where there's a house going to go, a driveway, the road, and so on and so forth. Trees on the property that can be saved and those we can put in, that those be saved. Any trees over eight inches, not in a right of way or anything, can be saved. I'm going through these because I'm trying to address your letter without making a whole evening of it here. So bear with me. Within all areas outside the limits of disturbance, we would propose that rather than the areas being, it's a nice fancy word, constitutive, wow, big word, of the conservation easement belonging to the HOA or the new residents who may vote to at any time to encroach, alter, or remove it. Greater protection should be afforded to this wooded area by either of the following options. Town will take control of easement or the developer should be required to place restrictions. And it goes on in that face. That's an absolute. Once HOA is formed, the homeowners are there, then the 10 homeowners that are ultimately be in there, they can't vote to say, well, you know what, we're going to change it. No. That land stays forever while. That is part of a resident, that's the way HOA works. So there is nobody going to be able to go in and change anything afterwards. Okay? Understood? Okay, okay. And let's see. Developers should be required to place the restrictions upon the deeds of all lots. Yeah, that's, that's good. And with prohibitive, removal of existing mature vegetation outside of the disturbance area as well as being required to provide notice to the purchasers. That could go right in the deed when they buy the house. So that would be in their deed, that they cannot disturb that land. Okay? So look, I'm trying to address some of the things of your letters, pretty much all of them. And what else have I got there? Is there something? I think that was pretty much it. So with that, we did close the public hearing, but I know this is four years ago, it's been a while. If there is anybody who wants to speak in regard to this, just keep it short for a few minutes. Anything new or different, you'd be more than welcome to come up. Yes, sir. Just go up and give us your name and add to us, okay?
Christopher Schuler, 793 Blue Creek Drive. I'm right against the land because it's a pie shape. The only really concern I have at this point is the fence and trees. The fence will stunt the growth of the trees and I've looked at his other properties where he's done it and things are falling over. I mean, it looks terrible. It should just be a double row of trees. Make it look pretty and more protection. Because a fence doesn't grow high, trees do. And then I just want to make sure there's no additional assessment on my property because last time on the map that I got, I was giving all my land to the town because no one proof the blueprint. So I just want to make sure no additional assessment is put on my property where the sewer line is going. So I don't know where I can see that.
I'm listening to you there. Is the sewer crossing your property is it?
No, it's next to mine, but it's really tight.
Okay.
And I didn't give the permission to use my land, but on the last survey map or whatever, you know, layout of, they had my land being given to you guys. And I want to make sure no assessment, assessment is put on my land.
Okay.
So can we go back on one of the easements?
Saying it was an easement.
Let's clarify, it's an easement.
Yeah, I don't believe the easement's on that property. Okay, you were...
There are, it looks like I, there's an assessment for that.
So this is the property line.
That's the property line?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And this is the sewer line.
Okay. That's fine.
So that would be in the middle of the easement that's been given.
As long as the property line, because I don't want any of this.
Now I understand what you're saying. Yeah. So you just don't want anything going over by the years? I got you. Okay. Thank you. Thanks a lot. Thank you. Anybody else wish to? Any other comments from anywhere?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, see, trying to follow up on what the gentleman said.
Daniel Davis, for the second day.
If you look at the plan that shows where trees are being removed, these plans show trees, trees, or trees being removed from this gentleman's property.
From his property?
Yes.
Yeah, there are a couple mature trees that...
They're going to be taken down, you say?
All of those access.
Those are already taken down.
They're all doing.
Why can't you update the map? It's been a while, three years ago.
Oh, really? Well, that's a plus through there. That's good.
His employees concerned about work being done on a property and this showed work, but it's been done already, then it's not a concern.
Thank you. Hey, go ahead.
Hi. Yeah, I just want to say, actually, I really like this development. So I think it's great that you guys worked with the developer and there's preservation of, you know, existing vegetation. The conservation easement thing is awesome. This is the kind of thing that, you know, our group, the Webster Open Space Committee, we really sort of want to see happening more often in Webster. I think it is the perfect example of how, when you have a development, it doesn't have to be completely awful and destroy everything. It can be actually really nice and you can get the best of both worlds. And I think it's also a great example of how, you know, residents, I don't know if, who Dan is, but I think it's a great example of how they can, you know, if they're understanding the code and they can intelligently ask for things that make sense, that are within, you know, your power to do. This is how it's all supposed to work. So yeah, I just want to say, this is exactly what I like to see and yay. And also, I just wanted to clarify the elements of their letter that you were, you know, sort of agreeing to and saying, you know, this is, this is good stuff. You're going to read those into the resolution? Obviously not the thing about the homeowners association because as you explained, it doesn't need to be.
What I've done, I've taken notes out of it. So if we make a motion, whoever makes a motion, we can, in my opinion, I would like to enter these into, into the resolution. Yes.
Okay, because I know that's important, so.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Again, Dan, how do I, I don't know how to pronounce his name. D R M A C I C H. Damage? I guess it is something like one or whatever. He did submit a letter. This came late today. I mean, this is like four years late, but you know, we're okay with it. And pretty much everything he's got in here is what I just expressed because it sounds like he read your letter and put a lot of it in here. So what I'll do is I'll give it to Catherine, I'll enter this into the record also, okay? All right, and this, I won't use this one here yet, and you can have it. All right, now, board. Some were not here when this was approved back then. They received a preliminary approval and since then, it has received all governmental approval. It's gone to PRC, it's been updated with comments from PRC committee and so on and so forth. So if anybody has anything they'd like to add into it, please help out. John?
No, I'm fine.
All right. Derek?
That's pretty much the same as it was.
Yeah. Yep. And now I guess as far as engineering, Josh and Keith, you guys, you've received all the necessary paperwork for it. So you fellows are all set with it?
Yes.
You guys are okay? Okay, then the engineering is good. That's, that was a concern we had back then and here we are tonight. So this, we did, yeah, we did seek around this even back then, right?
Yep, that's correct.
That was done.
Yep.
Preliminary, yeah. So we don't have to do a seeker. All right, then. All right, this may take a little bit because I don't have anybody to prepare a motion for me. I'm going to make a motion for the approval of this, so just help me out, okay?
Wait, is it one or two?
What's that?
Subdivision.
Subdivision, yeah, the subdivision will be separate. Usually we use that as a separate, but thanks for reminding me. Remind me, Kim probably. All right, I'm going to make a motion for the Seattle Reserve project and for final approval. And I'll use the cheat sheet for some of this stuff. And let's see. We'll make this subject to all project review committee comments. I'm going to put down subject to parks and recreation fees. Now, that is, there is a, this is going way back and I can just give you, we used to have a resolution just specifically for that. And this was pursuant to this law, blah, blah, blah. Hereby finds facts that applicant presented a proper case for requiring parks and recreation where you don't have parkland, a piece of property that you're developing. Some places they put parks in, you know, for a ball field and what have you. In cases where there are nothing, the homeowners have to contribute to a parks and rec fee through the town. So that's, we just put that in. So just to clarify with that, all this. So subject to parks and recreation fees, subject to all preliminary approval conditions, subject to all applicable governmental fees, make this subject to Department of Public Works approvals. And significant construction shall occur within one year as deemed by the planning board to expire on August 5th, 2026. Conditions are preliminary, this is important, you need to do this. The conditions are preliminary and final approval because we've turned some down now. The conditions for preliminary and final approval are depicted on the cover sheet of the final design plans. Okay?
Understood.
And the engineer for the proposed project should provide a letter of certification that all proposed work was completed as per planning board resolution of the final approval before a certificate of occupancy will be issued. A letter of credit to the town for the project shall include the fee for the engineer's final certification, inspection of the site, all stormwater facilities, that would be the detention pit and so on and so forth, are to be constructed first. All downspouts connected to the storm sewers, subject to resolution in the final approved minutes. And this is, this is based on drawing number, what is this drawing number? Everybody see it there? What is your drawing number on this one?
Yep.
2723?
272316. 272316. That's a covering.
All right, now, you guys want to help me out with any of those? I want to add these couple of things that we just discussed. I'm going to put those in there too. One is, I'll put this whole sentence in. Within the 65 foot buffer, I'll give you this after sleeping, just take it. No, no, no. Within the 65 foot of buffer, which is 15 foot beyond the 50 foot setback and constitutes the limit of disturbance on lots six through 10. It says, we propose, all right.
Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry. Sorry to interrupt. I think that would be consistent with the comment to provide the conservation easement signage along that limit of the conservation easement, which is beyond, which is beyond the setback.
That's another part of it.
Okay, yeah, I'm thinking that might cover it.
I'll put that, I'll put it in just so we reiterate.
Yeah, I'm thinking that might cover it.
Yep. And we propose the removal, let's see where I went, blah, blah, blah. It's a, constitute the limit of disturbance on lots six through 10. We propose the removal of existing vegetation be specifically prohibited and included in the definition constitutive of disturbance within this area in addition to any excavation of soil and grading. So we'll put that in there. That's really part of it. Anybody, anything else you've seen in that letter that you think? Within, how, it comes in the disturbance. Okay, trees, that, we have that in the preliminary, so you're going to have to, before final, before you get a permit and everything, you're going to have to just locate the trees that you're saving on the site there at eight inches.
Okay.
Okay? So saving the trees, that's already been in there, so we'll just, we'll follow up with that one. And...
Do you have restrictions?
I'm sorry?
Sorry, I was just trying to help you because I have just heard you.
No, go ahead.
Do you have restrictions in there?
Yeah, that's part of, that's part of, that comes in here. That's part of the HOA. That would be in homeowners restriction. That, that's the idea. Let's back it up a little bit, we'll put it in. But part of the approval for the HOA is, the deed restriction is that none of that land can be touched. And that's controlled because it is an HOA. So the HOA controls that.
Mr. Chairman, it would also be included in the easement language. Proposed conservation easement gets included.
Yeah, I got you, right. And I think we discussed the rear property lines at the 65 foot buffer, coming back that, of the buffer area that four inch by four inch post sign, because this is a conservation easement, be placed in the rear lines of those lots.
Correct.
Okay?
Yep.
All right, anything else? Folks want to help you with anything, feel free. This is all part of your neighborhood. I think these are everything that you requested.
Double trees.
Oh, yeah, thank you, okay. There we go, we did talk about that. Instead of a fence, instead of a fence.
Can I address that? Sure. Anyone, quickly? So the fence is not proposed along the rear property line. It's only proposed at, just at the end of the road. It's only little...
Where it comes into my living room and a fence doesn't grow.
Correct, sure. Yep, yep, correct.
So let's just put the trees.
So beyond, beyond the fence, we have, we show the, basically the line of proposed evergreens. And then beyond that is, is the, the amount of buffer existing trees that we could keep to limit the grading, so. So, but at least we, the fence isn't up along the property line, it's just a small section at the end of the road. The real buffer is the continuous row of tree plantings, so.
All right, is that what I'm...
The landscape show, plan shows it really.
Is that what I'm looking at right at the end there, Josh? Right there? Where you got your, is it, what's just below there?
Proposed new trees.
You can show the old. There's one with the fence right at the end of this, right there.
There's a design for, yeah, that, that's what the gentleman is that...
And that's only for, that's only for the width of the road and right at the end of it, where the pavement stops.
We can move and get a road built on up to your house, only in Webster.
Okay, so what you're saying, you prefer not to see, you prefer to see the trees in there.
I would prefer green giant everglies which grow two to three twenty years.
Let's just do that, okay?
Offered that area.
It's all the same.
But you can get off those to your house.
Okay, all right. So we'll eliminate the fencing and propose the trees to match what they're putting in.
But levels, you know, all.
I'll put it away there. You're going to have to help me.
Yeah, I'm just going to listen.
All right. Okay, so let's put it this way. No fencing along the rear property line and it should be just a line of evergreen, evergreen trees. Okay? All right. That's really good. All right, what else do we have? Let's see, campus. All right, and again, what, what you've just said, you mentioned, it's under the HOA, so that makes the restriction, so nobody can do anything as far as cutting trees in there. Let's see, what else do I have? Use preservation and contain the current site plan, actual upheld during construction here. Okay, I think, I think that covers it pretty much. Derek, do you think of anything else or? Pretty much covers it all, I suppose. I think we've addressed the comments of the neighbors. I think we've worked as best we can with it because, you know, we all, we all know that there's houses going up and the land is approved for it and all we can do is the best we can do with it, you know? Okay, with that, that would be a motion, I'll give you a second.
Sir.
I have a motion.
All right, Mr. Kishani.
Aye.
Mr. Tardino.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Coastal.
Aye.
Mrs. Malvin.
Aye.
Okay, I guess we're all set with them.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay. Good luck with the project.
Have a good evening.
Wait, I'll make a motion. We include also that this parcel for the subdivision, subdivision approval for this, this parcel for the Seattle Reserve.
Okay. Mr. Kishani.
Aye.
Mr. Tardino.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Coastal.
Aye.
Mrs. Moplin.
Aye.
Okay, I guess we're all set.
Thanks.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
Because I'm just going to.
Okay, this is.